The special meeting for September 18th, 2024 will now come to order at 3:32 PM. This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services office. There are no citizens signed up to speak today. Is there a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to recommend your approval of the 2024 proposed tax rate, which is necessary to fund the approved fiscal year 2025 budget and to announce the timeline for the public hearing and final adoption of the tax rate. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Jacob Ackton to the podium to answer all questions and to present the overview.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Madam Chair, members of the board. So happy to be here with you today. The purpose of this meeting is to approve the proposed rate for final adoption on October 2nd. And with your leave, I'd like to go through a short presentation regarding this process. So as you are probably aware, each year we have to calculate several different rates and then pick a rate between first, the no new revenue rate, or based on the revenue collected last year, what rate we would have to charge in order to collect the same amount of revenue, or the voter approval rate, which is an increase of 8% in total revenue collected. The ad valorem tax revenue projection rate is the rate at which we think we will actually collect from the taxpayers within our district. And the calculation of our expected revenue is based both on the rate that we select as well as the projection for the collection rate. Our taxes are broken down into two categories. First, we have debt service. We have $39 million, almost $40 million of outstanding debt. So we have to collect enough money to make the principal and interest payments required to meet our debt obligations. The balance of the rate goes into the maintenance and operations fund and is used for the general operations of the institution. Here you can see that based on the budget passed in June, we would need to increase the M&amp;O rate by 5.4% and decrease the debt rate by 1.6%. With bonding, typically the annual obligation goes down a little bit. And so that rate will continue to decline until we issue new debt. And the M&amp;O rate is really the rate that you can control as Board members as you set this rate. In total, you can see that the voter approval rate, the maximum rate that we could adopt without having an election, is .0969 for $100 of assessed value. And the no new revenue rate would be .0903. A great deal of work goes into this process every year, and I'm very grateful for the staff that works so diligently on this. Part of what we have to do is wait for certified rolls to come from the counties, showing us the assessed value of the property. And here you can see, last year, the change in assessment grew by 10.2%, which is why last year we could adopt the maximum voter approval rate of 8% in additional revenue while actually cutting our total tax rate. This year, we only saw an increase of 1.2%. We expected that to be higher as we started working on these projections earlier in the year. We're disappointed that it's only up by 1.2% and certainly we'll take that into consideration as we look towards next year. As a result, you can see that the approved budget is $224 million. That is still within, that's still under our voter approval rate, so we're still recommending that we move forward with the $224 million expected budget. Here you can see the breakdown between the current year and the proposed year. The proposed rate that we're asking for adoption then is .0961 per 100,000. This will generate the $12.1 million of additional revenue in the M&amp;O fund that we budgeted for this year. In terms of the historical movement of our rate, I think it's important to note that during the years of pandemic and the resulting changes in inflation have caused some pretty significant changes in our tax rate. Prior to that, prior to the pandemic, we had held our rate fairly flat year over year. We've had to decline the last several years because of the significant increases in valuations. With the slowing growth in economy, the .096 proposed rate puts us at virtually the same level we were at in FY 2023. So in this meeting, you need to adopt the recommended proposed rate, which is an increase in total rate of 4.3%. The tax base increased by 1.2%. And we will continue to monitor this like we've done in the past and provide you updates based on the information that we have at the time of each presentation. In terms of timeline, we are required to post notices, which we will do immediately following the approval of the proposed rate today. On October 2nd, we will have a special board meeting where you will be required to adopt the actual rate. And until that time, there is still the option for you to potentially make or consider any changes to the rate. With that, I would take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions, trustees, comments? Trustee Wilson?
What did you say our current debt is?
39 million. So that's the 30-
Our 39 millions are current debt?
So we have 39 million that's tied to these-
Interest and principal for this-
Yes, so the 39 million is our, sorry, not our current debt. 39 million is our current obligation. So that's the principal and interest for this, for this year.
Our total debt's about 400, 500, is it?
It is, yes.
Okay. All right, that's, okay, that's, okay.
Trustee Wilson, because I thought that's what I heard, because I wrote it down. I thought he said 40 million in outstanding debt.
That's just the obligation, that's what we got to pay this year.
Yeah, so we have to collect 40 million to meet our payment obligations. That doesn't cover the total amount of the debt. Thank you for the correction.
All right, and 2025, what, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but what are you expecting for property evaluations to do for next year? You know, what, how, you know, that's definitely going to impact our budgeting process for next year.
So the feds just cut the rates. We expect them to do so again later this fall, and we would expect that trend to potentially continue next year. So we're currently projecting that valuations will most likely remain stagnant or possibly even decline slightly next year.
That's it?
Any other questions or comments?
I do, Madam Chair. So the 1.2% increase is how much in dollars? Where are we in that? The tax base increased by 1.2%. I'm trying to find how much, how many dollars that is.
All right, so that, so last year, we were at $281 billion in tax base. The 1.2% took us to $285 billion.
1.2% of 285 million?
The 1.2% is 1.2% of 281 million, yes.
Okay, so the total taxable valuation is provided by the county is 285 billion, so 1.2% increase, which gave us, which gave them a certain amount of money. So we should have seen increase in collective, collected taxes, right? Collected property taxes.
Yeah, so we collect, we collect around 96% or we have for the last several years.
Okay, that makes sense. So this 1.2% was not significant enough to give us a calculation on what we would, what we would collect on that, or potential collection? Because like you said, only 96%. So the 1.2% times .96 times whatever the taxable valuation is, we should have seen X amount of dollars in increase, correct?
That's true. So if we hadn't changed our rate, if we adopt the same rate that we adopted last year, our total revenue would go up, presumably by 1.2%,
Right.
which is a small gain. In order to get the $12 million that we budgeted, we're closer to 7% increase. So only a portion of that is accounted for in the growth in the tax base. The rest is with the 4.3% increase in our rate.
Oh, I was trying to run the numbers, which I did not do to time.
Ask my question?
Are you doing that?
Along that line?
Well, go ahead.
Last year, we gave, we had a homestead exemption of what, 100, for 125,000? They had, gave a homestead exemption of how much?
So we still have a homestead exemption of 135,000. We are not recommending any changes to the homestead exemption.
So along her line is, okay, so if a property is 200,000, what is their tax increase? If we were to go up that 4.3 or 1.2?
So as you can see here on the screen, if your property home is 100,000 and you're not over the age of 65, it's $3.28 increase. So for a $200,000 home, it would be around $7 that they would have in total increase.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Wilson?
Of that 39 million to service the debt for this year, what portion of that is revenue bonds? Or is that a separate item and is that in our unrestricted budget?
That's a separate item that's covered as part of the approved general fund. So we have 20 million that we pay out of revenue, 40 million that we pay out of ad valorem taxes. So our total obligation for the year is just over $60 million.
You have questions? Okay, thank you, Jacob. If there are no additional questions, we are now ready to vote on item A.
Chair, that's his for me.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
The HCC Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing regarding the 2024 proposed tax rate at a special meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, at 3:30 PM. Members of the public will have the opportunity to participate in the hearing in person at the administrative building, 3100 Main Street, Second Floor Auditorium in Houston, Texas. The HCC Board will vote to adopt the 2024 tax rate at the special meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, at 3:30 PM. The meeting will be held, as I stated, at HCC Administration Building, 3100 Main Street, Second Floor Auditorium, Houston, Texas. Is there a motion to approve item B?
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we are now ready to vote on item B. Approve First Amendment to Chancellor's Employment Contract to Extend Deadline to Approve Annual Goals and Priorities.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. The open portion of this meeting, of the special meeting for Houston Community College Board of Trustees will adjourn to closed session. We don't have close, we're not going. Okay, all right. Okay, no closed session, so special meeting is adjourned at?
3:47 PM.
Very good.
Good afternoon. The regular meeting will now come to order on September 18th, 2024 at 4:02 PM. This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. At this time, please join Dr. Prieta Vandible-Stalworth for the prayer followed by (laughing). The pledge.
She forgot some.
Okay.
She forgot her book. She wants to go get her book.
Uh, you too. Come on, okay, I'm gonna, uh, the vice chair said he's gonna pray.
The Lord is still working on me, so.
Are we ready?
(inaudible) We thank you for the opportunity today to show that we walk in the Lord, that we are not weary for well-doing, and that all that comes before us today will be viewed and executed with the wisdom that you have anointed us with. We thank you for a beautiful day. We thank you for the wisdom that sits at this table and on this administration, and we ask that you would speak before we speak, and that all that we do today will be to your glory and not to our demise. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We are now ready to approve the minutes from the Academic and Student Affairs Audit Board Governance Committee of the whole and special meetings of August 7th, 2024, and the regular meeting on August 21st, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for August 2024?
So moved.
There, second. It has been moved in second. We are now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes for August 2024.
Aaron, that's yes for me.
Receive trustee Reichardt.
That's yes for me, too. I'm trying to remember. So it's yes for me.
Received. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
We will now move to our awards, presentations, and recognitions. Todd DePlantis will introduce the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Good afternoon. At this time, we pause for the recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th. We welcome to the podium to provide the overview of the history and culture relating to Hispanic Heritage Month, Dr. Melinda Mejia, Chair of the World Languages Humanities and Library Science, and Dr. Erica Stevens, Faculty Member for English and Humanities.
Thank you for your attention today. My name is Melinda Mejia, and I'm the Chair of World Languages Humanities and Library Science, and have been at HCC since 2012.
Hi, I'm Erica Stevens. I'm an instructor in the English Department here at HCC, and I've been here since 2018.
We are pleased to address you during National Hispanic Heritage Month and appreciate your attention. As you may already know, National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated September 15th through October 15th, this year with the theme "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together." The timeframe was chosen to mark the historical independence days of various Latin American countries, including Chile, Honduras, El Salvador, and Mexico, to name a few. During this time, we invite all our HCC community to recognize and celebrate the contributions of Hispanic and Latinx people in the United States and their history as people that predate European colonization. This month of recognition was enacted into law in 1988 and continues to honor the resilience, brilliance, and determination of the Hispanic community, many of whom are our role models, our champions, our colleagues, our tios and tias, and our abuelitos.
Within Houston, Hispanic residents are increasingly driving economic growth and shaping the future of our educational institutions. Just this past April, The Houston Chronicle reported that the number of Hispanic workers in Houston's labor force grew by 39% from 2010 to 2021 compared to only 14% for non-Latinos. And from 2018 to 2021, Latinos were responsible for 68.3% of the metropolitan area's gross domestic product growth, despite making up about 40% of the population. Again, that's 40% of the population and 68% of Houston's overall GDP.
Significantly, too, 1/3 of Houston Hispanic population is under 18. This group represents a good number of our future students, and the continued economic prosperity and growth of our city will depend on them and by proxy on us. As you likely know, 38% of our enrolled students in 2023 identified as Hispanic, and 42% of our completions were represented by Hispanic students. That's something we're also celebrating during Hispanic Heritage Month. This semester, they make up 41% of our enrolled non-international students. That's over 20,000 students, according to our Office of Institutional Research.
Of course, Hispanic Heritage Month is not just a celebration of economic power and success. Many faculty and staff at HCC strive throughout the year, and especially during this month, to amplify the voices and culture of Latinx people. In the past year, thanks to collaboration between the History and Humanities Departments, HCC offered various events for students that highlighted Hispanic heritage. My English Composition 2 class, for example, enjoyed lunch as they listened to a sociologist from Rice University discuss her research on the struggles and successes of Latin American nannies in Texas. She told stories many of my students knew quite well and were glad to see treated seriously in an academic setting. Events like these, listed here before you, outside the traditional classroom, have provided students with opportunities to build community, be inspired, and network with professionals, artists, and leaders in our city.
And we want to emphasize that such events are not reserved only for Hispanic students. Faculty across many departments believe that educating ourselves about different cultures benefits all students. Along those lines, our Puente Bridge program here at HCC, adapted from a decades-long California program that was initiated by Latinos, has remained active and open to students from all backgrounds since 2022. This program offers wraparound services, including college tours, professors trained in culturally responsive teaching, and events like the yearly Dia de la Familia. These kind of extracurricular reinforcements make a world of difference in our students' college experience and their success rates. While the publication Inside Higher Ed reported in May 2024 that degree completion rates for Latino and Hispanic students have stagnated nationally, they also recommended tried and tested solutions to promote success, including involving families in the educational journey and building connections to the local community. That's what we are doing here at HCC when we honor and celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. For this reason, we need and appreciate your support, the support from the various administrative teams at our Centers of Excellence, as their assistance is essential to the success of these efforts. A special shout-out to Student Services at Eastside, whose contributions this past academic year led to wonderful programming during Hispanic Heritage Month.
While the approval of Texas Senate Bill 17 and its rulings concerning diversity, equity, and inclusion compel us to be cautious in our programming, research continually finds that students thrive when they feel their identities and heritage are honored. We must remind ourselves that the Senate bill does not restrict educational activities related to specific cultures and identities in the classroom, in recruitment, and in many other venues. Therefore, we will continue to joyfully take part in Hispanic Heritage Month here at Houston Community College, and we will invite everyone to join us in following its theme this year to remain pioneers of change in shaping the future of HCC together. Thank you for listening.
Gracias.
Thank you, Dr. Mejia and Dr. Stevens, for the overview of Hispanic Heritage Month. Madam Chair, this concludes the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
Thank you, Todd, and thank you, ladies, for that great presentation. I would like to say congratulations to Dr. Prieta Vandible-Stalworth on receiving the Rice Engineering Outstanding Engineering Alumni Award on Thursday, September 12th, 2024, at their annual award event, which was held at Hotel Zaza. Congratulations. That's why you and Sean be having those moments on that end. We open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective districts and overview from conferences or workshops attended, and/or to recognize individuals for outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community service. We ask the trustees to limit their comments to two minutes. Any trustee want to share? Uh, trustee Vandible-Stalworth?
I have to thank the South Campus team. We did a STEM carnival for families, and over 1,000 people showed up, and most of them were children, which you can imagine drove us nuts. It was, uh, it was an outstanding event. There were 20 science tables in the building and six science tents outside, and the children had a blast. So I do want to thank the South team because that was a major undertaking. I want to thank my president, Dr. Butch Harrod, because he came out and... Did you hold the, did you hold the, uh, Iguana? The bearded dragon?
Oh, you passed under the building.
And, and I'd like to thank Mommy and me, the listeners, because this was her third annual event, and she had more people at this event than she had at the last one. So I want to say thank you, and thank you for the acknowledgement. And I want to acknowledge the other six people, in particular, Dr. Cassandra McZeele, who received the TOP Award, which was the Distinguished Engineering Alumni Award. There were seven of us that received awards this year, so thank you for that. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, the trustee. Trustee Laredo.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the presenters for the Hispanic Heritage Month, and, um, yeah, we, uh, we wanted to bring mariachis, but that would take too long, and we know that everybody, so just have that song in your head, you know, that we brought you mariachis today to celebrate us. And, uh, so thank you. And also, I just want to let you know that on, a couple of weeks ago, one of my former mentors and professors from the University of Houston with his Mexican-American studies, Doctor Mendiola, left us to go to the heavens above, but he, um, he left a great legacy of working with the students, working the community, and bringing us a lot of, of information that we didn't know. And so, um, you know, his, his legacy will live on in the students that he pushed and helped and to move on further, and that's what we do. I know as a board member, I'm always trying to help the students, just encourage them to believe in themselves and, and go to higher, higher degrees. And I also like to invite you to HCC Southeast next Tuesday is going to celebrate Grandparents' Day, and we're going to honor Mr. Cesar Rodriguez, and he's the owner of Doneraki's Restaurant, which is in the Gulf Gate area, but he's always had an event every Christmas for the past 45 years of honoring the grandparents. So it's our turn to honor him and thank him. So, um, join us there at HCC Southeast. And, um, also, I had the privilege of attending the film festival that they had this week there, and, uh, so, and then also, uh, we know that the firemen and our policemen at public, and our public safety in the Northeast are real happy about joining us, and we want to, we want to invite them to come and take a tour of our facilities, because we have something great there, and we need to promote it and showcase it. So thank you to all.
Anyone else? Trustee Wilson.
Um, this month, I had the privilege of going to three, uh, area meetings, business committees, and one in Katy, and one in Spring Branch, and one in Aleaf, and at that meeting, uh, we, Dr. Hodges and I talked about the potential name change, and we threw it out to the public, and we solicited, uh, names from the public, and, uh, as we said at the last meeting, this is, uh, this institution is, is the citizens of Houston's institution. We just occupy these seats to represent them, and it's important that we go get input from the citizens and what they want, uh, and the direction they want us to move. One thing that I mentioned, I don't know whether anyone else saw it, it was in the Wall Street Journal last week, but Campbell Soup has changed their name to Campbell Foods. They, uh, decided that they did more than just, uh, made soup, so they, they have changed it. So if a well-thought-out, good name change, I think will serve this institution well. And, uh, I think we've collected a bunch of names, uh, or potential names. One person even suggested having a contest, and whoever wins gets a prize, but, uh, it's very But, uh, it's very important to get feedback from the community. Thank you.
I agree with that, Trustee Wilson, because, uh, I actually had a meeting with, um, a few citizens in my district, and, uh, when I first mentioned the idea of changing the name, they were like, oh, no, that's the great part. It's a community college, which means fees are low. And I explained, well, the tuition won't change. And that was the big buzz phrase for them, tuition won't change. But also, in addition, I had the opportunity, along with, uh, Dr. Webster, to meet with, uh, one of the, our county commissioners, Andy Meyer, who, um, wanted a tour of our, uh, workforce building, and he was extremely impressed, and, uh, actually, he's actually going to work with Mike and his team to help us get some, get funding and, uh, more students into our building, because, um, Fort Bend County is really growing and, um, but we, they don't have the manpower for the workforce to actually keep up with the growth, and that's why he's very interested in Houston Community College. And I, I was just, I was very excited about that. And, uh, we also started because it's, it's almost election time, and we've started voter registration at, uh, our Missouri City campus and also staff at campus as well.
Chair?
Yes?
I've, I failed to mention that the, um, from the three groups we attended, there was, um, the support was there for a name change. It was overwhelming. I think there was just one person that was concerned about all the wonderful history of this institution and, and that negative aspect, losing, but that's the same thing we said, the tuition wouldn't change, and, and open admission is not going to change. So, uh, they pretty much came on board, but it was, uh, pretty overwhelming. People were receptive to that.
Other reports? If, sure, okay, Trustee Davies.
I guess I'll get in on the fun. So thank you to Chancellor and Dr. Harrison for having me at the nurse penning ceremony that took place at Coleman College, uh, last month in, in August. We also had the pleasure of having a tour of the Coleman campus with, uh, Harris County's newest state senator, Senator Molly Cook, who was a registered nurse. And so it was a great opportunity for us to highlight the, uh, campus that we have, the facilities, and the training capabilities of our awesome institution. Finally, last week, myself and trustee Ward Johnson, accompanied by Dr. Ramel Young, were able to participate in the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation's Annual Legislative Conference, which is a major legislative gathering where major policy issues are discussed. And so it was a privilege to represent the college, um, at that gathering. Thank you.
One else? Okay. The following, uh, meeting, uh, board meetings are scheduled for October. October 2nd, committee will be the committee meetings, and also October 2nd, there will be a special meeting, public hearing, and adoption of the tax rate for FY 2025, which will start at 3:30 PM. October 2nd, we will also have the committee of the whole meeting, which will start at 4:00 PM. October 19th will be our regular meeting at 4:00 PM. The meetings will be held at the HCC Administrative Building, 3100 Main Street, and will be posted according to the Open Meetings Act. We will now take this moment to express a very happy birthday wish to Dr. Vandabel-Stalworth, who celebrated her mm birthday on September 6th, and trustee Monica Reichardt, who is celebrating her birthday today. Happy birthday, Monica! We wish each of you a wonderful birthday celebration, and may you be blessed with many more. This concludes the chairman's report. We will now hear from Dr. Ford Fisher with the chancellor's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to begin with our great news on enrollment, and at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Andrea Burge, interim vice chancellor of Strategy, Planning, and Institutional Effectiveness, to the podium to provide an update on our enrollment and transfers in the first three slides there. So, Dr. Burge, please.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor, trustees. So fall enrollment is still ongoing, but currently up by 7% in our credit careers. Note that in the graph on the right, despite the fact that fall enrollment is still ongoing, we have already surpassed our end-of-term enrollment for each of the last two years. And we expect enrollment to continue, especially for some of our late starting sessions and our non-credit careers. All seven colleges are up as well. So.
Great.
Now, bringing your attention to our credit careers, which we focus on because they include the, um, dual credit, our workforce certificates and associates, and all of our transfer-intending students. For each of the last four semesters, when we do a year-over-year comparison, we can see that our credit enrollment has increased, which, um, from 3% in fall 2023 to currently at 7% this year, so a very strong increasing trend over the last four terms. Again, thank you to the faculty and staff who are working so hard to bring our students to HCC and keep them enrolled.
Appreciate it. We sincerely do.
Yeah. So we recently received our transfer report from Houston Guided Pathways to Success, which is typically called Houston GPS. This is very new data. Houston GPS is a partnership between 14 two- and four-year institutions in the Gulf Coast region. The institutions collaborate to ensure that students can seamlessly transfer and stay enrolled in their path to graduation. Occasionally, the GPS consortium issues reports letting us know how HCC students perform academically during their first term of transfer. This table examines first-term success of Houston Community College students who transferred entering the four-year institution in fall of 2023. So it's very recent data. The first thing you'll know is that HCC transfers a lot of students, 7,551. One of those, but these institutions are different sizes, and one of the ways that we compare the number of transfers is to look at the number of transfers to the, um, GPS institutions relative to the enrollment the prior year. So enrolled 2022, transfer fall of 2023. For Houston Community College, the percent transferring to these institutions is 10.4%. For comparisons, Lone Star's number is 8%, and San Jack's is 9.2. So we do see that Houston community colleges are very successfully transferring to these institutions. Now, we've also included two success rates. One is the DWIF rate, which is a rate of students who get a D, a W, an I, or an F in their courses. We also include the average GPA, notably for DWIF. These are not grades you want, so down low is good. Okay? And you can see again, um, the overall grand total number is the number from all transfers to the seven four-year schools. So it's every community college transfer who entered that term. And you can see that HCC compares very favorably to the grand total numbers, which suggests that our students are set up for success, and they're very similar, um, and often better than their, the peer colleges. One thing you'll note is that the overall GPA of our transfer students in the first term is, is just over a B, which indicates that they are successfully making that transition to the four-year institution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Burge. And thank you, team, and thank you to the board of trustees for your support. I would like to also indicate that we have key leadership appointments, which you're aware of, and I'd like to congratulate the six administrators who have been appointed. And so as I name, as your name is called, please stand to be recognized. Uh, Dr. Norma Perez, Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services and Chief Academic Officer. Dr. Jerome Drain, President of the HCC Online College and COE. Dr. Lucicia Harrison, President of Coleman College of Health Sciences. Dr. Edmund Butch Harret, President of Central College. Dr. Michael Webster, President of Southwest College. Dr. Jacqueline Swindle, Associate Vice Chancellor and Chief of Strategic Partnerships. And of course, they join their colleagues, who are fellow presidents, Dr. Zachary Hodges, President of Northwest. Dr. Mike Edwards, President of Northeast. And Dr. Viagran Glover, President of Southeast. Thank you all so very, very much. A great team. Now, these roles are essential to stabilizing our leadership in our colleges throughout the district and in working collaboratively with local community leaders and business and industry partners as HCC advances its mission throughout the community at large. Establishing permanent, stable, and effective leadership across our campuses was a driving force in the decision, so once again, congratulations. I'd like to also indicate that HCC has received a $2 million grant from the U.S. Department of Education, congressionally directed by the late Honorable Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, to fund resiliency-related community outreach, course development, and existing workforce training. The award period has been extended through 2026. The original period was 9/1/2022 to 25, so we're delighted about that extension. I'd like to also comment on the external community engagement. The months of August and September have been filled with excitement as we engage the community internally and externally. On August 21st, we held a tour for the opening of the HCC Coleman College at Midtown. So please mark your calendars for the official ribbon cutting that is on, it's going to be on schedule for October the 1st at 2:30 here at 3100 Main Street. We also had the opportunity to welcome our faculty to the start of a new semester for Instructional Day. Then earlier this month, I met with our Phi Theta Kappa student leaders. Each year, they identify a project that can be implemented across the district. This year, they are focused on tutors, teaching aides, supplemental instruction, safety and security, and food service. A follow-up meeting is being scheduled to help move their work forward. The next is external engagement. I would also like to highlight external activities that showcased our commitment to community engagement. On September the 5th, I had the honor and privilege of presenting to the Rotary Club of Houston, where I shared HCC's impact throughout the community with education and training opportunities, and our common goal to improve the quality of human life through service and education by providing a resilient workforce and a strong free enterprise economy. We had the opportunity to host the Honorable State Senator Molly Cook, as was mentioned earlier, who visited HCC Coleman College for a tour of our state-of-the-art facilities. During our visit, Senator Cook was able to observe firsthand the advanced resources and innovative environments that we offer to our students and to our staff. So once again, thank you to trustee Davies-Jimitan for extending this opportunity. So just this past Saturday, we welcomed Consul General Andres Diaz of the Colombian Consulate in Houston, who brought his team and area residents from Colombia to HCC's West Loop Campus. HCC and the Colombian consulate are working together to expand access to higher education at HCC to Colombian students who reside in Houston as well as in Colombia. So thank you to Dr. Webster and Mr. San Juan for your great leadership and work to extend invitations and to engage all Centers of Excellence that were present. Lastly, I had the opportunity to serve on a panel at the Federal Reserve Bank for the State of the Hispanic Data Summit, which provided valuable connections for expanded partnership opportunities for HCC. So these are just a few of many, many, many outstanding events that have been held across the district and throughout our service area. These events not only enrich our organization, but also strengthen our ties with the wider community. So now, at this time, I would like to invite the 2024-25 United Student Council President, Jonah Garcia, to the podium to present the USC report. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, Madam Chancellor Ford Fisher, and respected faculty and staff, my name is Jonah Garcia, and I serve as the President of, of the United Student Council. I'm so excited for the upcoming month and to share what my fellow officers and I did during the month of August. Today, I will be speaking on the following items, such as the upcoming events and HCC-USC President Video and the USC General Assembly. For the first order of business, the USC Executive Board Member had our, uh, Board had our first meeting on August 16th to discuss semester plans and goals for this semester, for, for this fall semester. One of the goals is getting involved in civic engagement, volunteer opportunities such as voter registration, and in art competitions for students across the HCC district. We will accomplish this goal by partnering with the government departments and host watch parties, tabling events for Constitution Day, and assisting, uh, volunteer deputy registrars with voter registration drives. For the second order of business, I am currently in the process of working with HCC Southeast Public Relations, Ms. Diana Barero-Burgos, to schedule a recording session for the USC President Video. The United Student Council has traditionally recorded, um, a message addressed to the students, to the student body. This year, the Executive Board has agreed to participate in part of the video, and, and I look forward to working with Ms. Barero-Burgos and her staff. For the last order of business, the United Student Council will be hosting their first General Assembly for the academic year on Friday, September the 20th, from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. The first meeting will be virtual, then each meeting following will be in person. The USC and SGA district-wide will be represented and have an opportunity to report on their campus student engagement, and the general, the USC General Assemblies will be held on the third Friday of each month from 2:00 PM to, through 3:00 PM. This concludes the United Student Council report for September. Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Madam Chancellor Ford Fisher, we thank you for your support and for inspiring us to be better leaders every day. Thank you, and I yield the floor back to you, Madam Chancellor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you. Excellent presentation. Now, I'd like to invite Dr. Nicole Goutet-Hanuluma, our Faculty Senate President, to the podium to present the Faculty Senate Report.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
We don't have a whole lot to report this month, as we just started last month. We elected our cabinet last month. I'm so, so excited to, uh, let you know who they are. Our new treasurer is Sophie Hossi, an instructor in econ; Stacy Higdon, Associate Chair in English; and then Catherine Fields, who I do believe is an interim dean now, but she's still going to serve with us on Faculty Senate. She is our, um, oh, secretary, there you go. So, so we are currently working with the subcommittees, of which we do have a few, to, uh, set up the charges for this year, based around my, uh, goal of HCC forward. charges for this year, based around my goal of HCC forward. How can we, as faculty, help HCC go forward from today to beyond? We are truly excited this year to have an influx of more workforce faculty involved in Faculty Senate. We are truly excited about that, and we hope to continue to grow that as we do go forward. So, yay to that. Currently, Better Check Orman Auction is planning is underway. That's November 1st this year. We're looking forward to it. And I would be remiss if I did not do my civic duty in commending our faculty and helping with retention efforts, as we have all these students that Andrea bought forth for us. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to every single one of our faculty who is, is strong in the classroom and helping our students stay here. Our next meeting is actually this Friday at 1:00 p.m. in Central, and we are also meeting online, so it is hybrid. And we're having our first social of the year on Saturday. It's a potato party, so I'll see you all there, if you can come. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Goutet-Hanuluma. Very good. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Aaron Henry, President of the Staff Senate, to the podium to present the Staff Senate Report. Mr. Henry.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Happy National Hispanic Heritage Month. It was a good day. Trustee, we did, in fact, have a mariachi band out at Northwest College today, where we danced and enjoyed Don Araki's enchiladas, so we enjoyed that today. The staff at Houston Community College are eager and ready to start as we have this fall semester, as we can see enrollment is up, and we should give our staff members a round of applause for their great work that they have done in helping increase our enrollment, particularly those Saturdays where we had all those folks come in, those students come in, so we're, we're really excited about the work that our staff members are doing. The staff of Houston Community College is ready to embark on an exciting journey through collaboration and innovation. We are committed to working together cohesively as we continue these efforts to make this institution the best institution. We've just concluded the first full year of our Staff Senate. While many universities and colleges have Faculty Senators and even Staff Councils and Senators, HCC stands out as a leader college. We are proud to be recognized as such, distinguishing ourselves from sister institutions in many ways. The staff is enthusiastic about the future of this institution, and we acknowledge our critical role, as you have, and we're so grateful to the Board as well as this administration for allowing this Senate to take place. Our staff, alongside our faculty colleagues, are experts and leaders in their respective fields. Staff roles include, and this is not an exhaustive, exhaustive list, admissions advisors, academic advisors, procurement professionals, finance professionals, campus operations and facilities, testing, police, call centers, counselors, library professionals, project management, and more. As reflected in the preamble, in order to form a more perfect union, we believe that our collaboration and influence are key to creating opportunities for our students in our region and globally. The question has come up, what is the role of the Staff Senate? Well, I'm glad you asked. The role of HCC Staff Senate has been and is resolved with the staff, and the establishment of this body is to promote staff participation in the planning, the policymaking, and in the decision-making process of the college. We serve and represent the interests of the staff to promote meaningful collaboration. We are committed, and we look forward to working with this Board, as we have been working with this Board and this administration, as the Board is ideal examples of collaboration and collaborative governance. What better example to look at than our Board of Trustees? We look to continue to work with our Chancellor, who has engaged staff in a collaborative effort, but we look to, we look forward to this even more with all of the administration from this day forward. The staff promotes participation in planning, policymaking, and decision-making at this institution. We represent the staff's interests and aim to foster meaningful collaboration. We look forward to working with this Board, which exemplifies collaboration and shared governance. Together, we can enhance the student experience and make our strategic priorities a real reality. A brief update for you includes that the staff are actively engaged in the Student Success Summit, caring campus, campus culture, focusing on creating safer campuses and collaboration with our police, AR governance, institutional effectiveness, and much more. And just as a brief update, we will have our voting for our new officers this month. And so this concludes my report. Thank you, dear Chancellor, and to you all, Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry. Thank you so much. Very, very good, very powerful. I would like to now focus on what our Board members have embraced for our Student Success Initiative. With HB8, we're focusing on the student outcomes and the credentials of value. So at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Michael Webster, President of Southwest College, to the podium to highlight our credential of value student today. Dr. Webster.
Thank you, Chancellor, Trustees. I'm really excited about this student, and you're going to be surprised by this first line. Pedro Berus is an adjunct faculty member here at Houston Community College at Southwest. He is also a graduate of HCC and Computer Networking with a specialization in cybersecurity, and in fact, his teacher was our current dean, Samir Saber. And he is building his own career as a security analyst. He enjoys teaching others while working in the field to stay up to date in the ever-changing world of computer science. His work is important to him because he feels he is fulfilling a vital role for society in helping to protect businesses and individuals from malicious hackers trying to steal or disrupt others' livelihood. He calls it a cat-and-mouse game between the good guys and the bad guys. Here is his story.
Initially, I started at HCC to study computer science and then shifted to cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is a field that's ever-evolving, so you never stop learning. There's a cat-and-mouse game, so we always try to outrun the bad guys, and they always try to outrun us. So, it's a, that gives us that passion for continuous education, and the fact that we are protecting a critical infrastructure as well, providing, maintaining good services for companies, organizations that we protect, that also pulls me to continue in this field. Right after I graduated from HCC with my degree in Computer Networking System with specialization in cybersecurity, I started working for Moreham and Hospital System down here in Houston, where I work as a desktop support solution specialist. After a few years there, I decided to go back, finish my bachelor, and after finishing my bachelor, I started working my first job as a SOC analyst, and then from there, I moved on to my current position as a security analyst, too, where I'm the point of escalation dealing with more dangerous incidents. I came back to HCC to teach, partially because I also maintain a good relationship with my previous professors, which one of them is currently the dean. I came back because I believe in their passion, that's why they passed it to me. They were always keeping myself up to date with the industry trends, so that's why I still want to keep my day job, you know, providing that knowledge that I'm getting off the field, straight up from the field, to bring that to my students and always keep involving on that. So, working with them again now as a colleague, yeah, it's been amazing, and it's almost a dream come true. I believe in the, in the mission of HCC, specifically my department, and continue providing practical knowledge and making sure that students are getting the maximum hands-on that they can have, so that they can not just learn what we do in the field, but actually do it. And this is one thing that I've seen HCC continue to do, continues to push. We just have now a new security operation center, not many colleges can say that. We have the robotics labs and AI, so you can see that HCC was always striving to stay up to trend, always pushing to, to some of the most recent technology advancements.
So I'd like to ask Pedro if he wants to stand up and be recognized.
Dr. Webster, Mr. Pedro Berus, and Mr. Dean Samir, would you come to the front, please, and the Board members can stand here, because we would like to have a photograph with you, Yes, congratulations. So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. That concludes the Chancellor's report. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Board today. We are now ready to consider the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda and set aside for discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. We are now ready to vote on the consent agenda.
Sharon, that's yes for me. There it is. I got it, yeah.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of nine to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item A, Real Estate Property Appraisal Services Project Number RFQ 24-40?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This item is presented to authorize the Chancellor to negotiate and execute a professional services contract with Volbridge VPA Houston and Dallas INC, Inc., to provide professional real estate appraisal services on an as-needed basis in accordance with RFQ 24-40. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Mr. Atkins and Dr. Biddenfeld to the podium to provide an overview and to respond to questions. Please join us at the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Chancellor and Trustees. Our item RFQ 24-40 is Real Estate Appraisal Services, which offers the college access to the pricing and overall, I think, the gist of appraisal services we understand for selling potential properties or valuing them, but we also want to consider the broader implications with perhaps insurance claims or other issues that may arise in our storm environment. In this case, we issued a request for qualifications and established Volbridge as the best suited to provide these services on an as-needed basis.
Are there any questions, Trustees?
I'm, I'm looking at B and, A and B, so we only do one real estate appraiser, but we do several brokers. So is there a reason for that difference?
Yes, Trustee, one of the reasons that you would want a, an appraiser singular as opposed to a brokerage, which might provide negotiation services, would apply consistency in that valuation. That is, if there was some litigation, if, for example, an insurance company disputed the value of a roof, if we had disparate appraisals or different methodology from those companies, that would offer grounds for contest.
Do we currently have a need for something to be appraised right now? And rather than setting up a blanket appraiser for a year at a budget of 500, what, why don't we do it on a, one, on an as-needed basis?
Thank you, Trustee. This is on an as-needed basis, but for budgetary purposes, we did set a threshold based on various market rates for these types of services. This would be managed and by the Facilities Operations Department. They would determine much of that need as related to facility repairs, or insurance claims, or the sale or acquisition of property, with guidance from procurement, any sort of support they would need as far as negotiating those rates. And due to the length of time and the resources required to produce these sealed bids and competitive documents such as the RFQ, it made sense to produce it in one sort of document, and then to encourage participation by respondents. You do generally want to offer some sort of range of potential compensation to encourage those participants to submit bids.
I, I still don't understand why, is it the time or why you don't do it on an as-needed basis? See, as, as a board, we're delegating, you know, and I, I know we can't manage the school on a day-to-day basis, but what we're doing is we're delegating that whole responsibility, and I'm thinking I would rather have you come to us and ask us on an as-needed basis for that approval, and then we vote on it.
The only concern that I can see from a procurement angle, again, not only with the time, but also in coordination of facilities, and I'm not sure if Mr. Rockwood would like to speak to that, but the challenge would be particularly in an emergency situation or something where we're asking for funds from FEMA, that we would want those appraisals done without needing to schedule a special meeting of the Board.
I hear you, but, you know, I have a, I have a pretty dim view of real estate appraisals. When you buy a house, they first ask how much the house is selling for, and then they appraise it for that number all the time, and it's just, I don't, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable in doing it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, if there are no que, oh, Trustee chief.
Which firm are we currently leveraging for this service?
Thank you, Trustee. The current contract has expired for the, the firm for this service at this time.
But who, who was the expired contract with?
I would have to look into that for you, sir. I would have to, I'd have to bring that back to you.
All right, thank you.
And how much did we spend on that last one, did you know?
I'd have to bring that back to you, sir.
Okay, could you just send that to all the trustees through Board Services? Because we'd all appreciate that information. All right, are there any additional questions? Okay, thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve Real Estate Broker and Related Services Project Number RFQ 24-40?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, we need to vote on that item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We will now vote on item A.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of seven in favor, one opposing, one abstaining.
Is there a motion to approve Real Estate Broker and Related Services Project Number RFQ 24-40? Three.
So moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This item is presented to authorize the Chancellor to execute a contract with the recommended firms, as noted in the summary composite score sheet, to provide professional real estate broker and related services on an as-needed basis in accordance with RFQ 24-43. And so with your permission, Madam Chair, I And so with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Mr. Atkins and Dr. Bittenfeld to the podium to provide an overview and to answer questions, please.
Thank you, Chancellor and trustees. RFQ 24-43 for Real Estate Broker and Related Services allows the college to access various negotiation and listing services of the selected firms. One is a certified small business, and the other four are committed to subcontracting work to certified small businesses. Within this, they'll assist HCC personnel in the evaluation and sale and acquisition process, but additionally, they can serve as landlords for any leased property and provide those professional services.
Questions? So trustee Laredo.
So looking at the, at the summary at the end is we have five that are highlighted. Would it be possible to use them as roving? You know, if you don't use one, you use the other one, the other one. Is it possible to do that?
Trustee, that's the intention, to be able to select the provider best suited. That might be a regional determination, again, with the guidance of Facility Services. It could be based on an area of expertise in professional services, much like attorneys or engineers. There may be some distinct area where one firm demonstrates greater aptitude or experience. And so in that sense, there would be the ability to utilize one or all five at different periods.
So as we're voting, so we're voting for all five and not just one?
Correct, trustee.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, just, trustee Cheban.
Just, just for my own education, from the description, it sounds like the only compensation that any of these firms would get for providing these services is the fee for the service, not any kind of percentage of transactions and any of that. I just want to confirm, is that the case? Or is there any kind of like a transaction-based percentage that would go along with this if we did proceed with anything?
We, we do apply to market standards, but as far as the contracts negotiated, I believe it is only the fee.
Could you provide some, some more detail later on about when you said we apply a market standard, if there's, if there is some kind of later compensation that comes along with closing deals and et cetera? Just again, for my own education, no rush on it.
Absolutely, trustee.
Thank you.
The way I read this is we're going to spend $500,000, up to $500,000 on these five people. And then if there's a real estate transaction, the commission is going to be, the commission is going to be negotiated. And let me interrupt myself on the negotiating part. Since the realty laws have changed, can, can that commission rate be negotiated now? Used to, it was always the standard 6%, but now I think with the real estate laws that have changed, it can be negotiated. And does our contract allow for that?
I'll defer to general counsel on the legislation, but as far as the negotiation, we do reserve the right within whatever legal standards to negotiate down. Additionally, though, I would like to emphasize that these are not to exceed, and I think we've seen a number of parallels with other government entities, even in this region, where there have been budgetary challenges due to a lack of foresight on setting a not-to-exceed threshold, which is what we have here. It does not need to meet that. It will likely be under that, but this allows us to forecast and make sure that there's some certainty in the budget. So that way, we're not speculating or then coming to you and saying we've spent more than what was budgeted.
And I would just add, trustee Wilson, that the way this procurement works, because it's qualifications, we have not actually negotiated a contract yet with these vendors. So what we can do is take that back and use that as part of the negotiation, should we have that flexibility.
Yeah, well, I realize you haven't negotiated any contracts, but the law's changed, and I want to be able to have the flexibility to move that percentage down, to save the college some money if we can.
Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah, but it, hasn't that changed this year?
So to clarify, there was a court case.
Right.
That was negotiated as a settlement, which essentially compelled the National Association of Realtors to revise their rules. So let me just clarify, not all real estate agents are part of the National Association of Realtors. And so as a consequence, essentially, practice was believed to be, I am a licensed real estate broker, so it was generally perceived that real estate transaction fees were prescriptive, if you will, and it was anti-competitive, because people will often use the percentage that you've referenced. But as a broker, I'll say, we've never had a standard fee, if you will. Fees have always been negotiable. But as a result of the court case, it compelled National Association of Realtors and other entities, state realtors associations, to no longer list commission, compensation as part of a listing, so that it should be market-driven. So yes, as a result of the court case, it's now all subject to negotiation, though it's always been, it's just in the past brokers could advertise, now you cannot.
Sure.
Another question. Yeah, I have another question.
On this? Go ahead.
This, not to, this, the intent of this is not to embarrass anyone, but there were a couple of real estate, real estate transactions that we had at the college that didn't turn out well. And are any of the people that are listed in this five, were they a party to those, what I call, too bad, real estate deals?
If I believe I know what you're speaking of, then I would say yes, sir. Can you be more specific on?
Well, I don't know how specific I can be and.
Not, 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 not in this meeting. Not in, in the regular meeting.
So while that's deliberated, I'll ask a couple of questions. Dr. Vaughn Bittenfeld, are any of these firms that are being recommended, have they, are they currently or have previously represented the college within the last five years?
I would have to look into that. Again, I was not party to the initial origination of the bid, and so I'm still.
Yes.
Right, they, they list that, but I don't, as far as the five years and things of that nature.
Yes. Dr. Bittenfeld has been with us all of about two months now. So yes, he would not have that history.
So just to clarify, I think you were, trustee Laredo, where, where did you see what it says?
I stood that we have heard any experience with HCC.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments, trustee Wilson?
Yeah, let me make sure I understand this. So you're recommending someone on this list that the college has had unfavorable financially, not a positive outcome. You're recommending a firm on this list that we've had that history with in the past?
I would like to just indicate that, and of course, I would defer to counsel, but the policy was to be followed in reviewing and in recommending of the various procurement and professional services items. So I defer to Dr. Montgomery.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chancellor. We do not have any vendors on a debarment list, trustee. And as far as specifics on real estate deals, then we would need to adjourn to a closed session, because procurement would not be aware of any of those matters that I believe you are speaking to.
Yeah, Madam Chair, could I, I asked that we do adjourn to closed session to discuss.
Before you go there, trustee, what, just a quick suggestion. Dr. Montgomery, is it permissible that, as it is the board's prerogative, these are qualifications-based solicitations? The board can amend what administration's recommendation is to include three or four out of the five firms that are highlighted?
No, sir. We can, the board has the option to reject all or to go with the recommendation. So the board can decide to reject all, and then the administration will have to go back and look at its options, either to resolicit, et cetera. But we, as a board, unfortunately, you don't get, and that's procurement law.
Madam Chair? I, I think, too, that if there's, if individually we have issues with the performance of certain folks, that's one thing, right? But as a board and as an institution, did we, you know, blacklist anyone, I guess, is, for lack of a better way of saying it? I'm not familiar with that. So when I get this from the administration, I'm trusting that all the due diligence took place and that you've listed those with experience and that we're moving forward, and no one's on any list of not, you know, not being, not, not fulfilling their part of the deal when it comes to the expectations of this college when we engage them. So I just wanted to put that out there, that individually, we may have our, you know, who we like or don't like, or what we liked about a deal or didn't like, but collectively, I just want to remind us all that there is collectively, we didn't vote on eliminating anyone from anything ever that I remember. I just, just wanted to put that out there, just.
Thank you, trustee.
It was clear. And, and trustee Wilson has every right to feel about anyone any, any way he wants, but I just want to make sure it's clear.
Madam Chair, it's, it's not a matter of whether I like somebody or don't like somebody. It's a business decision to me. And if we've got somebody on this list that's cost the college money in the past, I don't want to have them on the list. And it's not personal, it's not a matter of whether I like them or dislike them, it's I don't want to do business with people that have taken advantage of this college and cost us money.
I should have used better words. You're right, it's not about like, dislike. In the end, it's about the quality of the work that's rendered. In the end.
So, so trustee Wilson, is factual that there's someone on the list that we've had a problem with? Well, I think we need to go into closed session. I said I want to, but I think.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Monica?
Right, you know, I just want us to think about whether what's going to be said in closed session is actually going to, I mean, you can always vote it down. Just, you know, I just, before we lengthen this meeting and make everybody wait through us going through closed session, I just, you know, if somebody's going to vote now on this, you know, I just really want to think about whether having more information is going to make that individual change their vote, you know? I, I just want to really think about whether it's an effective use of our time, because we can't change the list, right? It's either all up or all down. So, you know, that's what it's going to end up being.
And Madam Chair? Thank you, and that's a good point. Trustee Thomas?
It's just, I guess that, what, what trustee Reckert is saying is, is in regard to how much we as a board immerse ourselves in recommendations, and I've always felt that way, whether it's the prior administration, the current administration, I always support the, the administration. Do I question? Absolutely. You know, I, I read, I do mine differently, you know? I like to read and ask behind the, the scene and, but get my answers. But in the end, we just, I do have a, we do have a colleague that has a question, and he wants it addressed, so I.
And I agree, but I'm going to say this. I think it's, the first time I became board chair, I made the comment that we must read our material before we get here, and whatever questions that we have, we need to get them addressed before we get to the meeting. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but it would just make the meetings go much more smoother if we have all the questions answered. As I stated, I'm not for going into closed session, but I'm not going to deny a trustee if they really feels they need to go. But trustee Laredo made a good point. We need to call a vote, and if you're for or against, you make your vote, you cast your vote.
Madam Chair, I don't mind saying in open session what I'm going to say in closed session. I just want to make sure that we're legally doing, as a board, what's right. I'm going to say what.
Oh, I, I know that. I know that. Trustee Cheban?
So, agree in principle with what trustee Reckert said about trying to be efficient with our time. Two, part question in that spirit. One, if we push this vote a month or until the next meeting, does anything break? Do we, do we leave ourselves exposed if something comes up? Second, would it be possible or appropriate, under the appropriate privilege, to do the sleuthing and the legwork to understand which vendor and, and what the issue was and the dollar figure associated with that, so the board is educated, so the next time we get together, we've got that information, we can vote accordingly? In my mind, the, the decision changes if somebody caused a $500,000 fumble versus a $50 million fumble, that would change my vote. And I think that sleuthing can be done outside of board time, so that we're respectful of everybody's time, but we can be educated as we make the vote. So what breaks and, and is that sleuthing possible?
I'll defer to Facility Services for any impediment to their work.
Thank you, trustee. So as operational, operational person, we don't like to have contracts that are expired. But in my opinion, to the next board meeting would not be an issue, I wouldn't think, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah, so given what has been shared by Mr. Walker and in respect to issues that trustee Wilson is raising, and obviously, there's some things that need to be expressed that understandably can't be expressed in open session, so I think out of respect for him, we should at least consider hearing out what information and getting some clarification. And then at that point, we can resume and make any determinations about additional questions being answered. He might go, we might go back there, and you get satisfactory answers to your question, and we can come out and vote then. So I'd say we consider that.
Okay. What's that mean? We will now adjourn to the open portion of this meeting. It's now adjourned. Go to closed session at 5:17 PM. I'm going to hold them to the 10 minutes. The open portion of the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Houston Community College is now reconvened at.
5:39 PM.
We will now vote on item B, Real Estate Broker and Related Services Project Number
Voting has concluded. The item passed with a vote of five in favor, three opposing, one abstaining.
Is there a motion to approve item C, Pressure Washing Services Project Number RFQ 24-43? I need a motion.
So moved.
There, second. It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to authorize the chancellor to execute a contract with Kep Companies DBA and Viral Clean to provide pressure washing services in accordance with RFP 2444. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Mr. Ackon and Dr. Benfild to the podium to present the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees. RFP 2444 for pressure washing services. This is a project that's going to be also managed by facilities, and this provides access to system-wide cleaning services, pressure washing. There is a small business component. If you review the agenda item, this firm is going to be subcontracting 26%, so 1% more than our small business goal, to a small business, and they'll provide various services associated with the cleaning of walkways, buildings, and ensuring the proper perception of HCC in the community.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, voting is now open.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item D, Safety and Security Lock-in Door Hardware retrofit?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to authorize the chancellor to execute a cooperative contract with RAE Security Inc. under the Interlocal Purchasing System Cooperative, TIPS USA, contract number 230202, to provide safety and security door locking hardware retrofit. With your permission, Mr. Vice Chair, I'd invite Mr. Ackon and Dr. Benfild to present the item.
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees. This request for quotes was issued through a cooperative entity. We received two responsive bids and selected the provider that offered the best value. This is RAE Security, and the total amount threshold is not to exceed 2.5 million. This allows for some margin of error and also provides certainty with regard to this. We did also subsequently negotiate additional small business spend. This was a little bit more challenging due to the nature of the project, to ensure that we are encouraging small businesses without compromising any access controls or security by having too many different contractors on the facilities and grounds.
Are there any questions?
Yes. I do.
Let me ask a couple of questions. How many doors are we talking about? I see the 76 buildings across 500 square miles. That does not tell me how many doors.
Yes, trustee, and there, we do have a spreadsheet. Facilities Operations did compile various spreadsheets for the bidders.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. So we did a comprehensive door assessment, system-wide. We assessed roughly 10,000 doors throughout our buildings, throughout our campuses. This project will affect roughly 4,000 of them.
So the original focus of this, how many doors were there on the first evaluation of this project?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
There's, there is a presentation, and the question I'm going for is there is now a $2.3 million price now to exceed 2.5 million, when before it was significantly lower. So in the first presentation, there was a number of doors that were given. What happened?
Ma'am, I cannot speak to the first presentation. I don't have knowledge of that.
Okay, Mr. McCracken, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. McCracken, please. Thank you.
Good evening. So, thank you. So when we presented the estimate to the board, I think it was in a closed session, I could be wrong about that. It was a little over 2,300 doors. When we went back and we double-checked all of the math, because the board was very insistent that this has to be right. And you made it very clear, we could only come to you once, and we had to get it right. We went back and we went and we looked through, and we realized that in the calculation of the number of doors, we had missed a set of doors that had a different, it's like a 16-digit code, and the digit in the middle, a whole set of them in a couple of buildings had a different code, so when we did the pivot table, it didn't balance. And so we ended up about 1,000 doors difference.
Okay, so who counted the doors? Who is we? Who counted the doors?
So we had a firm go through and literally take each door. They took the pictures. I don't know if you remember, we took a picture of each, each door. And then at the end, when we did the balancing, like you do the balancing, the books, and we realized that there were some missing, and so that's where the extra doors came from.
Okay, so a different entity did this, the?
The actual, the firm that actually did the initial survey, but it was under a separate contract, actually was RAE.
Okay, and then the second time it was not the same group, same?
And then the counting was us. Right, so they completed the detail of each lock, and then we completed the counting and the estimating to generate the estimate that we provided to you.
Okay, so the reason why I want to say this is because that presentation was an exceptional template for what we, for how we need to proceed when we are doing deferred maintenance. It was very clear, it was very concise, it was very disciplined. It was very clear. It was very concise. It was very disciplined. It was very detailed. The difference here is the count. So I like that template. I think the template was very well done, and I think that we need to look at presenting to the board materials based on that standard. Because we understood clearly, based on that standard that was presented to us in closed session, we understood clearly what was going on. So the only glitch was the number of doors. So if you missed 1,000 doors, I could see why the price would be this. But I want to say that that presentation of that, that presentation that we received was clear and concise, and that is the kind of template that we need to see when we are making these kind of fiscal decisions for maintenance.
Understood.
I know you don't, yeah, yeah. Let me say this. That's a project management thing. So I know you, you're looking at it legally. I'm not looking at it legally. I'm looking at it in the way that it was managed as a project.
Right. To be clear, my only concern was that we were going to veer into some security issues, which should be discussed in closed session. Numbers are fine, because that's not confidential.
Yeah, numbers.
There are some interrelation of those, so I was just prepared to jump in if needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Trustee Wilson.
Did I remember there was another bid, and it was 2, 2 million, and the other bidder was 7 million or something? And then?
When this agenda item was on the agenda last month, I believe, and we polled it, is there was a typo in the, in the agenda item, yes.
Okay, all right, good. And of these four subcontractors, 1%, three of them get 1% and one of them gets 2%. So that's $23,000 for a minority contractor?
Trustee, again, there was an effort made to include small business. We tried to look, again, after, sort of after the calculations were done, at ways to reasonably allow for this security-type project where there's limited access, but also encourage participation. On a go-forward basis, again, I assure you, in keeping with the Chancellor's standards of excellence, we are looking at more sort of logical ways to segment the bid packages to encourage small business participation.
And there's 2,300 locks? Is that what?
4,000.
Oh, there's 4,000. So 4,000 into 2 million is $600 a lock? Yeah, but it's per door, it's about $600. And are you counting both sides, or is that one side?
That was right. As trustee, as trustee said, yes, both sides. Yeah.
Let me say something. I've had to do this before, so I'm very familiar with what happens when you do this.
Does the 4,000 number count both sides or one side?
It's a lock set, sir, so it'd be both sides.
Yes, trustee Wilson.
And so there's 4,000 lock sets?
Yes.
And, okay, so that's about $600 a lock set. Okay.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, Dr. Benfeld, I'll just echo Trustee Wilson. I mean, 5%. And for small business participation, I understand the capacity issues sometimes, but as you apply Renew Think and Methodology, the thing that I always say is, when people say, well, where have you done this before? A small business never gets to do it until someone gives them an opportunity to. And what's reflected here does not really give them the kind of opportunity. They need to be able to grow and scale to specialize service, but if we're not fostering those opportunities, no one else might be for those small businesses. So just keep that in mind.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. We will now vote on Item D.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of eight to one.
Is there a motion to approve Item E, Library Management Services Project Number RFP 24-13?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented to authorize the Chancellor to execute a contract with Cersei Denix to provide a new library management system platform, as well as implementation of the platform in support of library support services. With your permission, once again, Madam Chair, I will invite Mr. Ackon and Dr. Benfield to provide an overview and to answer questions.
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees. RFP 2413 offers a library management system through Cersei Denix to essentially bring services together in student success support for the library staff, faculty, and students. And so this is going to integrate various resources to allow search engines. But we do have the library support services client department here to answer any specific questions about what the platform, platform capabilities are and technological improvements.
Questions, trustees?
More just a comment. I asked about this in advance, and I appreciate the response. Going forward, though, if we've got software or IT-related management systems that aren't mission-critical to the functioning of the institution, where if a little bit of a fumble, we could still get through, it would be helpful to understand if we've looked at the opportunity for project-based learning versus going out and paying somebody $600,000 for a service or a piece of software. We've got brilliant students. Dr. Webster highlighted one tonight. That can really benefit from the opportunity to, you know, develop solutions that stitch these platforms together, maybe even have some small business coming out of it, you know, plugging them into our small business competition in January. So I think having that screening just kind of as a matter of course, so that we understand if the opportunity's been looked at would be helpful. Otherwise, I'm going to ask about it every time anyway, but it'd be helpful to see that y'all have already looked at it. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think I, I want to ask a question of the internal team that manages this.
Dr. Stafford.
Is Dr. Stafford is walking up? Yeah, no, I'm just acknowledging, if you look at some of the items we've considered tonight, when you look at past performance and references, the lowest score has been at about 75% or 7.5. For this particular scope, Cersei Denix comes in at 7.4. I know it's not the same comparison, but it seems like we're getting vendors who've demonstrated good capabilities in these other areas. So if you might opine on what your inclinations are in terms of the capacity, notwithstanding the fact we only have three responsive bidders, but how comfortable are we that we're getting the right firm who has the capabilities to really deliver on what's needed?
Sure. Yeah, so first off, there's probably about six or seven major players in this, in this area. So we got three bids. Even the, the current vendor we had didn't even bid on it. I can't go into too many details about the RFP upfront, I guess. But the other thing about it is that we actually got three really established and actually one fairly new person in the, in the field. So we, out of the three that we got, we kind of got three that were, they each kind of brought a different thing to the table. So, but you gotta keep in mind that these products are really fairly similar in the sense that libraries kind of operate fairly similar. You're gonna check books out. You're gonna catalog books. You're gonna have to find some way to provide access to resources remotely. So all the products do that, and they've been doing it for years and years. So this is a fairly well-established market. There's not a lot of players in it. And they all know basically what library needs are, because they've been working with libraries for years and years and years and developing their products. So that's, that's probably why the scores seem kind of compressed a little bit anyway, because, because there's not going to be probably super huge differences, but we're very, very happy with the one we did get to choose. They seem to be going in a new direction. They're an established company that's going in a new direction, and I think it's gonna really benefit our students with some of the things that I think they're trying to bring to the table to make our resources discoverable. Even if you search in Google, it might say something like, well, you're here, I know you're in Houston, this library actually has the item you might be looking for.
And is it your opinion that this is work they could have collaborated with others on, or there just isn't capacity in the market for them to have small businesses participate in the implementation?
There are a few players in this marketplace that cater to smaller libraries. But when you start talking about a system like HCC and the number of students and the number of resources we have, you're probably gonna end up with one of the big players in the market. The latest kind of movement in this is an open-source service that, that actually was bid. It's an interesting concept. They, so, so they, they bid as well. But like I said, everyone in here is kind of established in the library market, even EBSCO, the one that is kind of developing a new product, which is one of the first new, new products out there in a while. They've been in the library world for longer than I've been alive, probably. So I've been alive for a while, as you can see, so. All right, thank you.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you. We will move to vote on Item E.
Voting has concluded. The item passed unanimously, nine to zero.
Is there a motion to approve Item F, Personnel Agenda for Faculty?
So moved.
It has been moved in second. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is presented for your consideration of approval for September 2024. With your approval, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Anderson to the podium to present the item.
Thank you, Chancellor. Madam Chair, trustees, we bring for your review and recommend approval for the administration to execute the employment contracts with the faculty listed in the item.
Are there any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we will now vote on Item F. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Voting has concluded. The item passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
We will move to Item G, HCC Foundation Quarterly Report. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is a report item on the HCC Foundation and the work being done for students' educational experiences and their support. With your permission, Madam Chair, Ms. Schmidt, President of the Foundation, will present an overview of the report and answer all questions. Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you very much, Board Chair Letten Gary, trustees, and Chancellor Ford Fisher. So save the date for Saturday, April 26, 2025. We are going to be hosting our biennial gala. It's now moving to an annual gala. And on that Saturday night, it will be at the Hilton Americas, so please save the date. And we invite each trustee to sponsor a table. Bring your friends, family members, and colleagues to support HCC student success, and be leaders in helping our students' dreams take flight. We know it'll be a memorable evening. At this evening, the Honorable Christina Morales, it will be our 2025 Crystal Eagle Honoree. Christina is a familiar face to HCC and the HCC Foundation, having served on the HCC Foundation Board for many years, and now as one of our board ambassadors. In Christina's role as Texas State Representative, and through her extensive civic ties, she has shared commitment to equity in education and its role as a driver of economic mobility for Houston-area students. Christina and her family have longstanding philanthropic ties to the community and to Houston Community College, including named buildings on the southeast campus. We are excited to honor Christina at our gala stage in, on April 25, 2025. Please save the date. Our gala chair is Vanessa Carter, who was the 2024 Gala Auction Chair, which raised the largest auction revenue in the history of the HCC Foundation Gala. Our 2025 Auction Chair is Jennifer Walder Grant, who is also the HCC Foundation Board Vice Chair for Philanthropic Strategy. This report from the HCC Foundation, based on the financials through June 30, 2024, is in your packets. I submit this report, and I'm open to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, trustees?
I have just a comment. Who designs like the yearly, like, they're always so beautiful and, you know, like, take flight, and who does that, out of curiosity? Is it the team?
Well, first of all, the theme, Where Dreams Take Flight, was actually generated for the first time using ChatGPT, which was AI. And the reason that was done was I was playing with it. And one of the most painful processes with a, with a gala committee is coming up with what the name of the theme is. As you can see, you get a group of five people together, and they all have different ideas as to what the theme should be and doing the idea generation. I walked in with five different options. They rearranged the options within five minutes to Where Dreams Take Flight. And it was the best experience that we've ever had in coming up with a theme.
It's beautiful.
Because the theme just fits for us at HCC with Swoop and with what we're trying to do for our students, then the wonderful graphics that you see are thank you to the graphic designers that are in Ramel's, Dr. Young's organization. They are the ones who did the graphic design for, and I just love it, Where the Dreams Take Flight.
Yeah, it's beautiful, beautiful.
They're just absolutely gorgeous. So thank you for the question. We love the theme. We're not changing the theme now. We love the graphics, and so you will be seeing this every year for our annual gala.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you for that. Any other questions that I might be able to answer? Just so you know, the HCC Foundation is your institutionally-related foundation, and we are a jewel.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to say thank you to the Foundation for helping the students that started college this semester. Thank you, Foundation.
All right, good job. We will now move to Item H, HCC Food Services Needs Assessment. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a report item that includes a survey requested by the board to assess students, faculty, and staff sentiments for food availability at the campuses. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Burge and Ms. Shira to provide an overview and to respond to questions. Dr. Burge?
Thank you. So one of the joys of my job is getting to talk to our students. Every time I talk to our students, I'm impressed by them and their ideas, and it is just always makes my day a little bit better. So today, I'm going to summarize part of what we learned from our food survey, service survey. I will start with the background, the potential benefits, student responses, and then we, one of the questions we ask them is, what do you recommend? And so we're going to present that to you. For the background, the question I'm going to uncover today is, should food services, did the respondents feel that food services should be a significant priority for the institution, and how does providing food services align with HCC's mission? Now, this is actually a small part of the survey. It was actually pretty long. The entire survey assessed the current food and vending services offered across the institution and determined the alignment of what students were getting with their needs and expectations. So there, not surprisingly, there's been a lot of research on food services and dining on campus, though most of it has taken place at four-year institutions. And so there's always due consideration when you extend, when you extend that kind of work. The clear results, however, have been that food and dining services have been shown to reduce feelings of isolation on campus, promote mental well-being, reduce stress, and encourage healthy eating habits. So the mechanism for food service impacting student success would be through these kinds of mechanisms. success would be through these kinds of mechanisms. So there were, so the survey was administered in the last two weeks of July and the first week of August. There were 2,640 total survey respondents, the majority of whom were students. 1,336 students responded. So we had student respondents from each of the campuses, so all campuses were represented. And when we did the preference questions, we asked students which campuses they were responding for. So this is a slide from the food services presentation back in June, just reminding you that we have three constellations of food services on campus: full service, limited service, and then vending only. So we started by asking students, faculty, and staff, how much time they spend on campus in a typical day. So you have, the students are in the dark gold, the faculty in the medium gold, and the staff, of course, in the lightest color. And you can see that staff were primarily the ones who were on campus the most. Students were typically on campus two to four hours or four to six hours. Now, this was summer, so their time on campus was probably a little bit shorter than it would have been during the fall. Now, this slot, this really surprised me, this result. We asked students, faculty, and staff, do you limit your time on campus due to lack of food service and vending options? And the response choices were no occasionally and yes. And 65% of students limited their time on campus due to food service, either occasionally or yes, and 68% of faculty. Now, that's pretty similar, but students, 35% of them gave the yes response. We're only about 23% of faculty, you know, said yes. The rest were occasionally. We asked, how often do you skip meals on campus? 81% of students, 81%, of staff, and 88% of faculty said they skipped meals regularly or sometimes when they were on campus. And when you read the comments around it, a lot of it was due to time and availability. So the impact to students, we asked them, how important is food service in terms of your decision about where to take classes? And how important is your, is food service in terms of your decision when to take classes? And there was, of course, variability, but clearly, it's one of the factors students consider. And that's consistent with the facilities, projects we did before COVID, where students indicated at that time, too, that they do think about the facilities on campus. They also indicated that there was an impact to their engagement. We asked if you ever had to leave or miss or leave any of the following campus activities or services due to lack of available food. And you could see that students did indicate that about a third of the time for most of these items, they do sometimes not engage in, say, tutoring because they need to go get food. I'm hoping for the study sessions with classmates, they go with their classmates somewhere. But we really would like them to be engaged on campuses. We know that that does impact student success. So we gave you some typical voices of students. Now, these tend to come from the limited and the limited food service and the vending people, students were much likely to say they needed a change in the campuses that had the full food service, like Coleman. And so I'm going to head through those since you had a chance to read them. So the preferences is that students definitely overwhelmingly wanted healthy and nutritious options. They could choose more than one of those, and also grab and go because time was a factor for them. Now, for dinner here, most of the respondents who responded they wanted dinner were actually students who were probably taking the night and weekend classes. Staff were somewhat less likely to say they wanted to buy dinner. Recommendations were about prices, of course, keep them down, quality. They wanted nutritious options. They really talked with quality. It tended to be about nutrition, service, accessibility, and variety. There were a lot of comments that in the snack machines, it was all high-calorie candy and chip-type options. And so they really wanted a variety that included healthy snacks. Now, here's the staff voice, and there's a couple of things I want to point out there. The staff really do see the benefit of the Student Union Center space for students in promoting engagement. And they think the more we have these spaces, the more students will come to these spaces. But they also talk about ways to do that that aren't necessarily bringing an entire food court into campus, a coffee shop, convenience store that's automated, better vending machines. Both students, faculty, and staff tended to be very reasonable about what they thought might be possible for the campuses. They clearly wanted the nutritious options, but they also were reasonable and realized that every campus is not going to have a food court. And that was really nice to see, that they seemed to appreciate that we were asking them these questions and really wanted us to think about how we could help them meet their nutritional needs while on campus. Questions?
Questions, trustees? Trustee Cheven.
Yeah, just wanted to ask, so the data is amazing. I'm glad that we were able to get the perspectives, our students, faculty, and staff through this kind of a vector. I'm curious about financial implications. I know there was a center request, the response came back that over time, we would be kind of neutral in terms of outlays and revenues. But I'm still curious about order of magnitude impact and how much of our working cash flow would be caught up in supporting expanded food service. Are we talking about, you know, tens of thousands of months, millions of dollars a year, just trying to get an order of magnitude for how this would impact the balance sheet? Because we will have to at some point juggle it with other priorities, all of which will be aimed at improving retention and outcomes. So just curious for that.
Right. Go ahead.
I would really like, and of course, we can hear from you, Dr. Burge, but I would like to respond because this was the first part of what we want to present to you, so that you will be able to see what the sentiments are from the community, the college community. And then with this report, what we'd like to do is build upon it by bringing back to you information on exactly what you're asking for. Trustee Cheven.
Yeah. And I was saying, we can definitely send you additional information about this. I think it's, it's, yes, because it is always a balancing act with the different priorities for the students.
Yeah. When do you all think that that would come back to us?
Well, I would think that as soon as we assemble the team, we are now preparing for a couple of major events, like the commitment event for our students, to get them registered for the next term and get them committed, that if we can bring this back to you in November, that would be perfect for us, if that's acceptable.
That's acceptable.
Okay. One last comment is, you know, we also exchanged some emails about data that we have on the impact of food service in terms of retention and enrollment, both for students and for faculty and staff. Given that we won't have resolution on this until probably early next year, given that the first report out on the financial end will be in November, it would be really helpful to have some kind of like a living experiment where we bring food trucks to one or more of the campuses to see if there's any movement in, like what the utilization is, what the demand pull is. To me, that feels like a fairly low investment opportunity to see how many students would really use that versus what's been self-reported in the survey. And I think it would really inform our decision-making as we get to that point of decision in late this year, early next. So.
Yeah.
Good comment.
I have, well, I have a comment to the, I don't know if it compares or contrasts, but I'd like to see the upgrade, excuse me, of the food in the vending machines. Because the vending machines are part of the Foundation's income. So food trucks are not. So if we upgrade the food in the vending machine, how would that, what would that impact be? I'd like to see, because I do not want us to lose that funding. And if we update or upgrade our food in the vending machines, then technically, we increase the number of the funding for our scholarship funds.
Yeah. And I can safely say there was broad support for upgrading the food in the vending machines.
Yeah. Yeah, because I know I heard you say that they wanted better quality, something that was more nutritional. Okay.
That was my concern.
A comment, Monica?
Yes. I just, just looking at this data, I just want to, it reminds me a lot of those quizzes that say, would you vote for somebody against X person? And everybody is for it until you figure out exactly what it is that is the alternative being offered. I know a lot of these numbers look really big, but some, you know, there's not going to be a perfect solution for everybody. You know, if a fast food place comes in, it's going to be unpopular with some people. We're never, we're never going to hit a space where 100% or even, you know, probably, probably 60% of these people are going to eat when they skip a meal, because we're not, it's not like we're presenting them with a salad bar or something, right? Something specific that they can vote up or down. We're just, you know, have this kind of amorphous food institution, right? You know, food program that has nutritious, affordable food, and it's obviously not going to be fit for everybody. So I just, you know, I just want to, you know, remind myself and, you know, people listening to this, that this isn't, you know, we're kind of voting for something that is amorphous at this point, and we don't know how many people will actually take advantage of it when it kind of comes down to concrete products and prices.
Right.
We're not voting.
Yeah.
It was just a report, Monica.
Okay.
But I would like to address bias for a minute, because we thought a lot about that this with this survey, because we didn't want to write a question where everybody would just say yes. And we would see that kind of response. So what we did is that we actually constructed a survey where the students essentially selected the campuses that they wanted to discuss. And we saw real differences between the campus. Like at Coleman, students did not say, in general, the daytime students did not say that they were leaving campus to get food, but we saw much higher proportions of that in the campuses with limited to no food service and students who would have been there in the evening. And so that suggested that those differences suggested that we were getting at some real issues, because we did see the differences in those campuses.
I had a comment, I had a concern about the comment from the student voice about the machines being broken or empty. So I would like for somebody to be able to address that, that that is not something that's continuously overlooked, and that we actually address that, because that could be a negative experience for their student.
Thank you, ma'am. So the current vending machines actually have a QR code where you can report problems that you're having with the machines, and that goes to the vendor. And the vendor comes out and repairs the machine in a timely manner.
What's timely?
They empty?
Uh, the empty.
Items in the machine.
The vending machines are empty, not except that payments are broken. So we're leaving it up to the vendor to come out, but we don't know how long the vendor's coming out, or we don't know the response time.
We currently do not have a food service manager on staff. We do not.
Okay. Is there a way that the student can report that? Or somewhere on the, I know we don't have food, but it has the campus manager facilities or somebody where that student can have that need addressed to show that we care?
Campus management is always on campus, and we work closely with them on a variety of issues that we address. Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned the QR code, that that's how you would contact the vendor. So could the campus manager use that QR code to let them know when the machines need to be refilled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we, all right. So I think that's the solution. You needed to say something. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I just want to say thank you, trustees. The thing is, looks good. We all participated, and it's a good feeling, and we had a great meeting. So with that being said, this meeting is hereby adjourned at?
6:20 PM.
Have a good evening, everyone.